Commissioner Yost and Anderson, when you change your virtual background, if you go to see where it says "stop video" right there and then you pick "choose virtual background."
Yeah, I did that.
Button at the bottom left that says "I have green screen," uncheck that. Make sure that it's unchecked and it might unghost you.
Let me try that.
Good job. Like, do you play in IT, Andrew?
Whoops. Don't want to do that. I tried that earlier and I got a pop-up that said something like that. "I don't have the requirements now to do the video," or something like that. We'll try it again. See if that comes up.
You like you as a ghost, don't you?
No, it took me something totally different. Here, let's...
Yeah, I picked the "touch up my appearance" and it makes me look more men and less wrinkles.
And now I can... All right, choose virtual background. And I take it, okay, if I do that... Here, let's try it again. Yeah, it tells me when I try to do this, it says, "Your computer doesn't meet requirements. Your computer doesn't meet the requirements to use this feature without a green screen." Okay. I could just take, if I take the background off, let's see if that helps.
Actually, would you like to trade computers, Karen? I'd like to use your computer on some of my other meetings.
Now you can see, you can see my home office.
Now we can see you. Yeah, that's great.
So if I put, it's just when I put the background on, it seems to cause a problem. So am I in trouble without the background or is there a problem with not using the background?
You're not, you're not in trouble.
So commissioners, just so that you're aware, Deputy City Attorney Matt Hader is having some difficulty getting into the Zoom meeting, so he will be joining us here shortly.
Okay. Did you want us to wait a few minutes before we start, probably?
That would be prudent. Thank you.
We're all going to become conference call experts after COVID.
Yes. And I was told this morning by someone in our professional organization that there are so many new types of applications for this and particularly like for doing video seminars and that kind of thing, that it's now becoming very competitive price-wise.
Teams, Zoom, Skype, can't learn them all, seems like.
Google.
Yeah, Google meets.
Matt, just, can you hear me? Matt? Just out of curiosity, do we have to show our faces on these from a legal standpoint?
One of the resolutions talked about being able to be seen and heard. So I think my answer is yes. I'd have to go back to that resolution. It was a... But there was, there was a reference to quasi-judicial hearings by making sure that the participants had to be able to be seen and heard. So the answer, the short answer is yes.
Okay. Are we missing anybody else or can we... Jessica, Steve, are we ready to start rolling?
Um, as far as I can tell, we can start going. I think we just need to broadcast because right now I don't show any attendees present, like the applicants or anything. But I think we just have to broadcast the meeting and that should solve that problem.
Okay. Let me know when it starts broadcasting and we'll call the meeting to order. Who's putting it live? Jessica, is that you or somebody else?
I am talking with Kevin in IT right now.
Okay.
So... The question about you have to be on video. The... Mr. Commissioner Kamak, it was in the ordinance 2271 that talked about real-time participation and visibility, audio or video. So actually, we can do just audio, I think. Can we have you just be on the phone one time, Dennis?
Yeah, I was, I was on the computer and saw you, but I don't think you could see me. And I was on the phone. I was having internet problems. They're, they're having, Comcast is having problems with my service out here, so. On these things like they, they come and go. I've got two brand-new computers and all the router and, you know, thousands of dollars of crap and they can't make it work right.
Um, the ordinance talks about that it has to allow all council members and city staff to see to the extent possible here and communicate with each other, the city manager, city clerk, city attorneys, like that, so. Anyway.
Okay, that's good to know.
All right, everyone, we are now broadcasting. We're good to go.
Thank you, Jessica. We will now call our planning commission meeting to order. Jessica, will you please provide a roll call for our commissioners?
Chairman Popiel.
Present.
Vice Chairman Omador.
Present.
Commissioner Anderson.
Present.
Commissioner Kamak.
Present.
Commissioner Yost. I think you're muted.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. I'd also like to introduce members of staff present with us today online. Jenny Axmecker, Planner; Travis Reynolds, Planner; Steve Timms, Planning Manager; Jennifer Jones, Principal Planner; Matt Hader, Deputy City Attorney; Jason Rogers, Director of Community Development; Jessica Main, Administrative Specialist. Thank you for joining us tonight. I ask for a motion for the approval of the minutes for our last meeting.
This is Karen, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jessica, can you please call for a vote?
Commissioner Yost?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamak?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Omador?
Yes.
Chairman Popiel?
Yes. The motion to approve the minutes has been approved by yeses. Thank you all. Will the city please introduce our first case?
This evening's first case is CU-123-20. Metro Wastewater Reclamation District is requesting a conditional use permit for a 6.4-mile-long wastewater pipeline project along Second Creek, known as the Second Creek Interceptor, that extends from east, from East 81st Avenue and Tower Road to East 120th and Wheeling Street, and the extension of the existing Sand Creek Interceptor, an additional .8 miles near East 64th Avenue, New York Street. The proposed route can be found at the online link listed on the agenda. Planner Jenny Oxmakor will be presenting the case on behalf of the city this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. We're going to, tonight's case a little bit differently. It's fairly technical in nature, so we're actually going to ask the applicant to go ahead and present the case to you, a little background on their project, what they're proposing, and then once their presentation has concluded, I will be back to walk you through the conditional use permit approval criteria and the initial use permit process. So with that, I'd like to introduce Steve and John and Miles with Met, on behalf of Metro Wastewater, and they will walk you through their presentation.
Thank you.
Give me just one minute and then I will get them unmuted and they will give their presentation.
Just one, one issue first. Our bylaws do require that the city staff do their hearing or do their presentation first. So if we're going to change the order here, I think we need to have a motion from one of the commissioners to go ahead and change the order of the presentation this evening.
Commissioner Kamak, can you make a motion?
I would like, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion or make a motion that we have a different order for this particular presentation and hear from the applicant first and then have the city explain our position, their position on it.
Is there a second?
Aye, second.
Jessica, do you want to call for a vote?
Commissioner Yost?
Approve.
Commissioner Kamak?
Aye.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Omador?
Yes.
Chairman Popiel?
Yes. Motion has passed and we can proceed with the applicant presenting their case first.
Okay, hi there. I'm John Wiki with Metro Wastewater. I'm a senior engineer. I thought, Jenny, do you have the slides ready to go for us?
Jessica will bring up the slides for you. And you can let her know when you're ready to move on to the next slide.
Sounds good. Thank you. This is our title slide. We can move to the next one. We're at the right meeting. So today's agenda, Jenny asked us to do a brief agenda here for you guys. I'll start with introductions. Like I said, I'm John Wiki with Metro Wastewater. We've got Steve Poole with HDR, who is our design engineer, and Miles Graham with GBSM, and a few folks from Jacobs, I believe, are on the line. They're our permitting lead. We'll go over the project for y'all. Steve Poole will take over the technical slides after I blow through a few quick ones here at the beginning. We'll touch on the Commerce City alignment and some design facts and figures, and then community benefits, as well as ongoing coordination with city staff and the commission. So, but that will move to the next slide. So Metro Wastewater, who are we? The map on the right shows a service area in the Denver metro region that Metro Wastewater serves as a wastewater treatment provider. If you look real closely to that map, there's two red dots. One centralized, which is the Robert W. Height Treatment Facility, which is a plant rated for 220 MGD. It's our large central plant right off of I-270, New York Street. And then the northern red dot is our Northern Treatment Plant, which just opened in 2016, rated for 28.8 MGD. And it's, it's our newest and greatest treatment plant and it will be taking the flows of this interceptor that we're talking about today. The Metro District provides service to 60 local governments in the region, serving 2 million people across a 715 square mile service area. We've been around since the 60s. We were created to protect public health and protect the South Platte River. So we'll move to the next slide. So where does Commerce City fit into this? The simple answer to that is that South Adams County is who you are contracted with to provide wastewater service, and South Adams County is a member of our Metro District. Big picture here is that this project will serve Commerce City, supporting economic growth and community development for your future planning. So with that quick overview, I'll turn it over to Steve Poole to take over the next slide.
Jessica, I believe we need to add Steve to the meeting.
Think you can hear me now, correct?
Yes.
Well, I was tempted to press the "stay muted" button, but let's just get going. Project overview. Metro District is designing the Second Creek Interceptor to convey flow from the southeast region of the community in the metro area. So the figure off to the right is, in dark blue, is the alignment for the Second Creek Interceptor. You can see we're collecting flow from Aurora in Denver on the most southern leg, which is on the bottom area of the figure, collecting it and conveying it north to a previously constructed interceptor, which is shown in light blue. That light blue interceptor, the South Platte Interceptor, then conveys flow to the Northern Treatment Plant. So what this is doing is it's expanding the gravity power transmission system and reducing the carbon footprint by reducing five lift stations along the way. So City of Aurora, City and County of Denver, Denver International Airport, as well as South Adams County, are able to decommission lift stations with this project. So in that, it'll decrease long-term operation and maintenance costs for each of those entities. Go ahead to the next slide, please, Jessica. A secondary portion of our project is the Sand Creek Interceptor system improvements. So I'll talk to the figure. Off to the right in red is the, the previous pipeline I described, the Second Creek Interceptor. And off to the left, you'll see in blue, is the existing Sand Creek Interceptor system improvements. What is circled there is Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the improvements that have been planned by the district. Phase 1 and Phase 3, I'm sorry. There is approximately a half a mile of improvements at the height facility and about .3 miles on the adjacent SunCorps property. So what the improvements do on, on this particular aspect of the project is fixes some condition and capacity-related constraints on the height facility or near the height facility so we can offload flows to the Second Creek Pipeline and preserve capacity at the height facility. So it's, I know they're, they're very separate projects, but they are one and the same. They're kind of all part of the, the regional strategy to conserve capacity at the height facility. Go to the next slide. So focusing in on the Commerce City portion of the Second Creek Pipeline. At the very top left of the figure there, you'll see I-76. And at the bottom right, you will see Tower Road and 81st Avenue. There you are looking at about seven miles out of the total 17 for the interceptor. And this is just the interceptor within Commerce City city limits. The diameter of the pipeline through this section is 36 inches on the south end, which is the bottom of your figure, and it works its way up to 48 inches on the north end of the figure. Approximate burial depths for the interceptor are seven feet to 30 feet underground, kind of depending on where we are adjacent to the, the Second Creek Corridor. Where possible, we're avoiding developed areas, planned developments, and traffic corridors. Next slide, please. The pipeline and the project is compatible with Commerce City's comprehensive plan. It supports existing and planned development. It preserves the natural character and landscape of the surrounding community, and it provides a sustainable design for a long-term regional solution, again, by eliminating those lift stations and, and providing a gravity solution for the community. Next slide, please. Here's our overall project schedule. As you can see, we are working our way diligently through the permitting and design phases. It's now August. We are approaching construction starting here this fall. So design is complete. We're, we're trying to finalize the permitting, which is, which is why we're meeting tonight. Our construction will take us through 2023 and we anticipate startup in late 2023. And as always, GBSM is here to assist us with community outreach throughout the project, which we've been doing a pretty good job so far. Next slide. Our construction will be implemented via alternative delivery, so it's a construction manager at risk. The district has performed a best value selection and found Garni Construction to implement the project. Their office is located here in Littleton, and they have a long history working with the Metro District on several projects. They did the Northern Treatment Plant, what, up on 168th Avenue. They did the Norse secondary improvements at the height facility, as well as the digester complex upgrades recently. So like I said, good, good working relationship with the district. Next slide. Our pipeline will be constructed, constructed primarily via open-cut construction methods. So we have, we have obtained, in most cases, 120-foot-wide working construction corridor due to the size of the pipeline. It requires a relatively wide working area. We're requesting, we've obtained, for the most part, 40-foot permanent easements for the project. There'll be extensive groundwater dewatering for about half of the pipeline. And then we have implemented erosion control and traffic control where necessary. So the figure or the image you see in the middle there is a traditional open-cut pipeline installation. You'll see the dewatering wells off to the left side of the picture and the, the excavator in the, the middle backfilling for the pipeline. The image to the right shows another form of open-cut construction methods utilizing a slide rail. And we implement those construction methods where we have tighter constrained corridors as opposed to the, the image on the left. Next slide. Where we are not able to do open-cut construction, we will implement trenchless construction or tunneling to what, which most people refer to it as. We, we plan to tunnel major roadways, irrigation ditches and canals, railroads, environmentally sensitive areas, as well as where we are deep enough where conventional open-cut construction will not suffice. Right now, we have 14 trenchless installations planned for our pipeline. Next slide. For the facilities, it's primarily a pipeline. So we have, our pipe will be either PVC, polyvinyl chloride, or FRP, fiberglass reinforced pipe, corrosionally resistant materials and long-lasting. Our manholes will also be made of corrosion-resistant materials. There'll be precast concrete with internal epoxy liners. The, the manholes are located at pipe deflection points, as well as spaced along straight runs of pipe as needed for district maintenance. Other facilities associated with our pipeline include connection structures, where we have multiple flows from different entities combining. We have metering facilities to determine how much flow is entering the pipeline from each entity. And we also have an odor control facility to treat any odors emitted from the pipeline. Next slide. Regional benefits, we've touched on this a little bit, but it's a long-term infrastructure solution. It's the result of regional collaboration amongst multiple entities and Metro District members along the pipeline. It's a reflection of the Metro District's commitment to environmental stewardship. It provides sustainable gravity flow and it'll restore or improve the existing land conditions as we, as we construct. It expands the regional water reclamation service for the Denver metro area and provides a long-term economic development and community growth pathway. Next slide. Okay. Into a little bit more detail, some of you have seen these slides before. Some of the things we worked through Commerce City with was the Second Creek Village, little pump alignment evaluation, and this is well-documented in the conditional use permit. We evaluated several alternative alignments shown in the three colors, red, green, and blue. Our initial proposed alignment was, was the red or the green alignment. However, after extensive evaluations, the district settled on the selected alignment of Alternative 3, shown in blue. That alignment was shown to accommodate the planned development, minimize impacts to traffic and existing businesses. However, it did result in an increased tunnel length and overall capital cost to the district associated with the longer tunnel and the two creek crossings with the additional dewatering efforts. But the blue alignment is what has been settled upon for final design, and I think that was well-received by the city. Next slide, please. Another more recent communication and, and alignment evaluations we went through was with, in regards to Reunion Village 8. We worked extensively with the city and that particular developer to revise our originally proposed alignment, which was shown in red, to the new alignment shown in blue. What this alignment does is it accommodates conceptual plans for the developments. It accommodates the irrigation canal relocation. It allowed us to maintain project schedule and most, and, and district access to the pipeline was our, was our big concern about how to get to these manholes until this development happens. It preserves, preserves the wetlands, avoids floodplains where, where practical, and protects the sensitive raptor habitat. Next slide. Okay, some community benefits amenities for our pipeline. We work closely with Commerce City Parks Department to try to incorporate some of the Second Creek Park Master Plan Trail System into our pipeline alignment. The district is installing gravel access roads to be able to access their manholes for maintenance along the pipeline corridor. And you can see that is highlighted in the yellow on the figure to the lower right. We're planning on installing approximately four miles of gravel access road within Commerce City. What's nice about this is it'll improve neighborhood connectivity to the Bison Ridge Recreation Center. So it, it's a kind of a dual-use trail for pedestrians. It complements Mile High Flood District's planning for the area. And one other thing, item to note, is we previously talked about a, a shoe fly and open-cut crossing of Chambers Road. We are now implementing a tunnel crossing at Chambers Road to further minimize traffic impacts. Next slide. Okay, our next steps. Here we are. August 4th, Planning Commission. We plan to take the project to the August 18th Metro District Board Meeting with a hopeful September 21st City Council meeting. And one thing to note is the, the easements are concurrent with the conditional use process. So we're hoping to get that all approved on the, the 21st. And then we're currently working through additional permits and agreements with Adams County, City of Brighton, and CDPHG. So that's where we currently stand now. I believe that's the last slide. Can you confirm? Yeah, that's it. Jenny, w- we had some, um, discussions and email traffic on the conditions for approval. We, um, redlined that, um, I'll, I think I'll just highlight that uh, the Metro District is very comfortable with all the conditions for approval that were outlined in the conditional use permit. We just redlined it to help provide further clarification on those, uh, requirements. Is that something you want to go through now in detail, or do you want to save that for after your presentation?
No, sir, I'll bring it up at the end of my presentation, but thank you for that introduction.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to, uh, open it up for questions on, on what I spoke about or what John spoke about?
Yeah, thank, thank, go ahead.
I'm just going to defer to you, Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Paul, yeah, that, that's great, now we can, uh, open it for questions from the commissioners, it's, it's great to hear, one of the questions I did have is, you provided a, a chart that showed what would be, you know, board open tunnel versus open cut, and Chambers was listed as open cut, so that was a concern of mine. Um, but in general, yeah, any major roadway crossing, I'm assuming you're going to tunnel versus open cut to mitigate impacts to traffic in the community.
Yeah, that's, that's correct, and I'll just, I'll talk about Chambers real quick. The reason we had open cut listed is, we were trying to incorporate the city's planned pedestrian bypass with our project. And that didn't pan out from a, I guess, a financial standpoint with the city. Um, so once we re-looked at it, um, it made, it made a lot of sense when we had the two projects combined to open cut Chambers Road. But once your project was pulled out, it made a lot of sense for us just to tunnel Chambers. And then, um, to answer your second part of your question, um, most roadways are open cut. Um, I'll say major roadways, um, for example, eighty-first, eighty-eighth, eighty-third, those are open cut. Uh, when you get to the major roads like Tower, ninety-sixth, Hundred and Fourth, Chambers, I seventy-sixth, those are all tunneled.
Questions from the commissioners for the applicant?
I have a, uh, a couple of questions, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, great presentation, Steve, I, you know, it's, uh, uh, I wish I'd had that before I had to read, uh, how was it, eight hundred and fifty, no, five hundred and eighty pages? No, that's good, good stuff. Uh, question, this affects, I think I read, uh, forty-one individual property owners, uh, in our city, have all of them been contacted personally or just sent emails out? And do they know what's coming down when you have to tear somebody's front lawn up or, uh, the street that they use to have access to, uh, their house?
Yeah, we, so we have a team of land agents that have been actively reaching out and communicating with each affected property along the way. Um, they know our name, they know about the project, I, rest assured of that. Um, there are a few projects, um, one on the south side of Hundred and Fourth, we have just un- been unable to contact. Um, so there are a few properties that are, um, going down a different path for easement acquisition than, uh, we typically would like, but, um, they all know about the project.
And have you had any, uh, adverse comments or, uh, reluctance to work with you?
Um, m- most of the adverse comments have been in relation to pushing it to one side of the property or the other. Um, we try our best not to bisect parcels or land that are especially slated for development, we try to keep, um, all the infrastructure on one side or the other, so. Um, there, there hasn't been a lot of adverse comments through Commerce City, I can say that.
Um, what's the expected age of the, uh, of the pipelines?
By age, do you mean lifespan, or?
Right, right.
So, so all the, all the items we're implementing are expected out of fifty-year-plus life cycle, and that, that's pretty good for gravity interceptors that have a lot of H2S corrosion. Um, so fifty years plus is what we're, uh, we're telling people. I'm confident of that.
And that's, uh, now this is an expensive job, does that ultimately end up as a homeowner cost through the charges that you give, uh, you know, um, you know, South Adams County water and, you know, our ultimate water and sewer bills and so on and so forth? How much of that is shared by public funds and, and private funds and, uh, where, who pays?
Well, I'll tell you that the district is budgeted for this project, so it's already, it's already planned for and budgeted accordingly, so it's not like you're going to see a rate increase if that's what you're getting at. But yes, ultimately, the, the people contributing to the interceptor over the years have paid for the project. And I'll let, you know, John chime in if he has something to add there if he wants.
Uh, no, that's accurate, Steve. Yep.
And then, and then a final question, probably after Jenny's, uh, presentation, but if we're going to have four, uh, four miles of, uh, gravel access road, uh, that's going to make it a little easier to get over to the rec center. I was wondering if the city has considered sharing the cost and putting pavement on that as opposed to gravel? Because that, that helps a whole lot of people that ride bicycles to have pavement as opposed to gravel.
So Commissioner Kamak, I can go ahead and answer that, they're building their access role, road to our trail specifications, so I believe it will be a crusher fine surface, but that's what's required for that section of trail in that area according to our master plans.
Yeah, the, the crusher find is, is correct, Jenny?
That's good to know, because I was going to ask that too, if it was going to be more of a road base versus a crusher find, so, that's good to know. Good job thinking about that. Any further questions from the commissioners?
How much land above ground? Uh, will the eas- how wide will the easement be?
I- in most areas, we are, are acquiring a forty-foot permanent easement. And I will say that a lot of our pipeline parallels South Adams County's easement. So they have an interceptor that runs, runs through this same corridor. So in, in a lot of cases, our easement overlaps their easement, so it's not an, it's not an exclusive forty-foot right, we, we are, we allow other parallel utilities, but we do not allow structures on top of the pipeline similar to how Adams County does. South Adams County, sorry.
So no one can build on top of the pipeline?
Correct, you, you know, a, a roadway would be acceptable, but a, a house or a shed, no.
Okay, what if, what about maintenance? Can you speak a little on that, right? It, it, how much maintenance will this require?
Due to the large nature of this interceptor, they require less maintenance than smaller ones, so. For some of the smaller interceptors, the district will do, you know, annual flushings, so they'll access each manhole a year. Um, with the size of this pipeline, they'll essentially drive up, open the manhole, verify that everything is, um, yeah, the lining isn't, you know, falling off, or there isn't anything hung up in the manhole, so it's visual inspection unless there's a bigger problem.
So in, in the, uh, in the, in the presentation that we got, it said, uh, ten percent of the pipeline every year, is that, is that we? So it's going to take ten years to inspect the whole pipeline?
So I can ring in on that one, Steve, so what, the ten percent is we try to video ten percent of our system, citywide, each year, so.
Okay.
What you'll likely see is maybe once every ten years, we'll have video equipment dropping into the manholes and doing a, an assessment of the pipeline.
Okay, okay, got you. I have no further question.
Thank you, Commissioner Yost. Any further questions from the commissioners? Before we turn it back over to staff?
I did want to just say thank you for the clarification that it's a non-exclusive easement as opposed to an exclusive easement, so that's very helpful, thank you.
We now turn it back over to the city for their, their portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Chairman. So as was previously mentioned at the beginning of this, this is case CU one-two-three dash twenty. The Metro Wastewater Reclamation District is requesting a conditional use permit for a six-point-four-mile-long wastewater pipeline known as the Second Creek Interceptor and improvements to a little less than a mile of the existing Sand Creek Interceptor, next slide, please. So as John and Steve discussed, this pipeline runs along Second Creek through Commerce City. It starts just south of the city, um, around Tower and eighty-first and moves north through the city, along Second Creek up to about a hundred and twentieth and Wheeling Street. It goes through a variety of zone districts, including public, agricultural, and a number of different PUDs or Planned Unit Developments, next slide, please. So why are we here tonight? Article five of the Land Development Code requires public utility installations and pipelines to get a conditional use permit in all zone districts. So that is why we have applied for a conditional use permit and have brought that before Planning Commission tonight, next slide, please. As previously mentioned, the total pipeline is a little over seventeen miles long with about six-point-four miles within the city limits of Commerce City. It varies in outside diameter from thirty-six to sixty inches, though within the city limits, it's going to be about thirty-six to forty-eight inches. The approximate width of construction is a forty-foot permanent easement, I believe the construction, temporary construction easements are up to a hundred and twenty feet. The pipeline cover depth varies from five to fifty feet, though within Commerce City, it's seven to thirty. Next slide, please. Their construction schedule, they intend to begin construction in the fall of twenty twenty. They're going to do it in phases to reduce impacts, and the applicant states they hope to complete the project by early twenty twenty-four. Next slide, please. So Commerce City is not the only regulatory agency reviewing this project, it is under review for federal authorities, state and local jurisdictions as well, so the Army Corps of Engineers reviews the project, Colorado Department of Health, various, uh, different divisions have authority over the project. CDOT is reviewing the project, and then our neighboring jurisdictions, Denver, Aurora, Brighton and Adams County are also reviewing this project, next slide, please. So how do we decide whether to approve a conditional use permit? The conditional use approval criteria discuss the characteristics of the site, whether they're suitable for the proposed project, if the use will be served by the city, if the proposed use will not have a substantial adverse effect, or that the adverse effects are mitigated to the maximum extent feasible, what the ongoing maintenance is for the project, next slide, please. As well as whether this violates any federal, state or local requirements, if a need within the community exists, and these are the different factors that we look at when evaluating conditional use permits. So what's proposed for the interceptor projects, they're going to provide an improved level of service to the community, so additional wastewater capacity. They're going to reduce energy use and carbon footprint. They're going to decrease the long-term operations and maintenance costs for the wastewater provider, and they're going to provide service capacity for future development within Commerce City. Next slide, please. So a little bit about the public notification and outreach project, process for this project. In July of twenty nineteen, Metro Wastewater held two open houses within Commerce City, one at the Bison Ridge Rec Center and one at the Eagle Creek Rex or Eagle Ridge Rec Center. They have an ongoing website with update information on the project, and since this project was posted, staff has only received one phone call seeking additional information that we subsequently had some email contact with a second person requesting additional information. Next slide, please. So just to cover the required public notification pursuant to the Land Development Code, we mailed postcards to adjacent property owners within five hundred feet of all the property boundaries impacted by the Second Creek Interceptor as well as the Sand Creek Interceptor. We notified over a thousand individuals through this method. We published the notice in the newspaper, and then we also posted twenty-two signs. Next slide, please. Based on the approval criteria for a conditional use permit, the development review team is recommending that Planning, Planning Commission make a favorable, favorable recommendation of this request, subject to conditions. So let's talk about the conditions for a minute. The, um, Metro Wastewater reached out with some requested clarifications on the conditions, so we have revised our proposed conditions, I believe those were distributed to the commission this evening, and so we would recommend adopting these revised conditions. They do not change the intent of any of the conditions, they merely clarify what's required as part of the conditions, and, um, I will bring those, well, actually, Jessica, are you able to share those conditions on the screen?
Uh, give me one second and I'll pull them up.
So while she is doing that, can I answer any questions?
Are the conditions that you're proposing different than what is in the, um, the package that went out?
Yes.
To?
They are different than what was included in the PC packet. They should be the revised conditions that were distributed to the commission members at the beginning of this meeting. The content is largely the same. The, um, red conditions have slight wording changes to just clarify what the intent was behind the condition. So for the applicant, I believe we accepted all your revisions. Um, we made an additional revision to condition B, just to take out the requirement of adherence to pipeline materials, but otherwise, we accepted your changes. So staff is recommending approval with these revised conditions. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the project.
Questions from the commissioners from staff? I don't think I have any further questions. Thank you for the presentation.
I, wait. I have a question. How, uh, how much further use, I mean, how far into the future is this going to? Uh, given that we continually expand these northern communities? Is this something that is going to put us well into the future for wastewater trans- uh, wastewater management?
It's my understanding that the sizing of the pipeline took into account, um, the use and input from the user districts, so for example, South Adams County Water and Sanitation is a member of the Metro District that helps to, uh, determine the alignment and size of this pipeline, so it's my understanding that their future forecasts were taken to account, but I would also give the applicant an opportunity to expand on that.
Ms. Main, could we unmute the applicant?
Uh, I'm here now. John, you want to take it or me?
Go ahead, Steve.
Cool, um, the district's planning, uh, duration is, uh, through year twenty fifty, so a thirty-year planning from today. Um, I will throw this out, just South Adams County build-out projection is actually twenty thirty-five. So the dis- Metro District is twenty fifty, um, your service area is, is through South Adams County is projected to be built out in twenty thirty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Thank you, no further questions?
Any other questions from the commissioners for staff? We will now turn to our public comment of our meeting tonight. Ms. Main, did anyone register for?
Uh, yes. Uh, yeah, so we're going to begin with, uh, Todd Messenger. He's the attorney for, uh, Freco.
Thank you, Ms. Main. We can unmute him.
Mr. Chairman, the Planning Commission, can you hear me?
Yes, Todd, we can, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, my name is Todd Messenger, I'm an attorney at Fairfield and Woods, eighteen oh one California Street, Suite twenty-six hundred in Denver. Uh, we are a general counsel to the Farmers Reservoir and Irrigation Company, which was founded in nineteen oh two. Uh, currently, Freco provides water through the O'Brien Canal, uh, that serves some sixty thousand acres of farmland in northeastern Colorado, of east of Greeley and uh, in between there and obviously the South Platte River. Uh, Freco facilities also serve about three hundred thousand residential water users, um, in the northern end of the metro. Um, the, the, the O'Brien Canal, which this project will cross, uh, on occasion will, uh, sweep the South Platte River, and what that means is when they, the diversion structure is open to bring water to Phil Bar Lake, uh, on occasion, the South Platte River won't have water in it beyond that point. That's how big and important the O'Brien Canal is. The Little Burlington is very important to a sister company, the Burlington Ditchland and Reservoir Company. Uh, both of these canals are very, very old, uh, the O'Brien is, I believe, a hundred and twenty. Uh, it's an earthen ditch, and the proposed, um, pipeline would dig somewhere between a forty-eight and a sixty-inch hole. pipeline would dig somewhere between a forty eight and a sixty inch hole with a bore five feet under the bottom of that a hundred and twenty year old earthen ditch that carries a huge amount of water, an unfathomable amount of water between the South Platte and Bar Lake. So we do not oppose the construction of this important pipeline for the region, but we ask that Commerce City put a couple of conditions on it to advance the comprehensive plan of the city, which includes the protection of surface water resources, including the O'Brien and the Little Burlington canals, and also to meet these standards. You know, frankly, the conditional use permit standards require mitigation of impacts on adjacent property and over a course of a pipeline this large that requires, in some instances, quite a bit of analysis. So I just want to take you through a couple of things quickly and then propose a reasonable solution to how this pipeline could be installed across those ditches in a manner that protects the public interest and protects these important and historic water resources. First is that deep in the applicant's materials, there's an admission that the trenchless construction technique creates a major risk of a sinkhole or a fracout on these ditches. This is something that Freco has been trying to work with Metro with about for two years. And we have on a rather about a six month basis been threatened with eminent domain instead of cooperation from an engineering perspective. Most recently, two weeks ago, with an actual eminent domain suit that marked the end of of the coordination that the applicant has represented it was undertaking with Freco to the Commerce City staff. So the fact that they admit that the major risk, and this is a quote, "The major risks for these crossings include settlement or heaving of roadway, traffic disruptions, sinkholes within the ditch and fluid fracout." We just want you to understand what that means. If the ditch could be shut off right away with the distance between the head gate at the South Platte and the construction site, water losses would be somewhere on the order of a hundred and five to a hundred and eighty nine million gallons, just like that. That's the equivalent of somewhere between a hundred and sixty and two hundred and ninety Olympic sized swimming pools. That's a lot of water, but it actually gets worse than that. In order to repair the ditch, we'd have to turn off the ditch for approximately two weeks in the best case. That would involve stopping the water, drying out the canal beds, importing clay, placing and compacting and testing that backfill and resuming the deliveries and testing it. Those repair costs would be on the order of fifty thousand dollars, which doesn't seem that much, but the losses to Bar Lake in that time period between two point seven billion and five point seven eight billion gallons of water. Those are huge numbers. That water cannot be replaced in the market because number one, nobody has water rights that are that ancient that could deliver that amount of water to the end users on the Freco system at that scale. It just can't be done. Even if there could be a number pinned to it, at the current rates for water, it'd be between six and twelve million dollars worth of water poured literally down the drain as a result of a fracout that that the applicant's engineers say is a major risk and that we assert tonight. Our engineers say the same. So what we're asking for, I think, is a reasonable request, and that is that four conditions of approval be added because we know that progress will happen. Freco actually deals with sewer crossings on a regular basis over four hundred miles of ditches along the Front Range. They probably grant two to three crossing agreements a week. And it's Metro doesn't want to consider that, but it's something that we think needs to be done. And these crossing agreements are reasonable. We I actually, when I first started working with Freco, negotiated one of these with your city attorney, now Robert Cheesely, for the Hundred and Fourth Avenue crossings of these two canals. The city realized very quickly that eminent domain wasn't suitable for something that complicated. And we came to reasonable agreements that are still in force today and working very, very well for both sides of the transaction. So we request, and we sent a letter to this effect that we add that 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 this body recommend adding conditions S, T, U, and V. Condition S would be prior to the construction within Freco or Burlington right away. The permit holder shall negotiate in good faith and enter into crossing agreements with Freco and Burlington that are reasonable, acceptable to Freco and Burlington. And the reason we ask for that is, I think, Commissioner Kama mentioned that, you know, or asked about the lifespan of this pipeline. It's fifty years. The order, the agreement that they provided in the eminent domain suit doesn't address what they do in fifty years, but essentially gives them the right to come in and rip up the ditch in any way that they want in fifty years, which again would have the same catastrophic effects fifty years from now as it would have today. We've already been through more than two lifespans of this pipeline in terms of the existence of that ditch, and we expect many, many, many more as that ditch is a major artery for water in this region. And there really isn't a good alternative way to move water around. It has to flow by gravity as Metro well knows. And canals are the best way to do it. So that'd be the first issue is to make sure that the crossing agreements work and address these issues of time. As Freco's counsel, I'm dealing with agreements that are fifty, a hundred years old, not infrequently now. And when they're inartfully drafted or don't think about the future, it creates a lot of problems. The second requested condition is the permit holder shall design and construct the crossings of the Little Burlington Canal and the O'Brien Canal according to Freco's Design Criteria Manual, including standards applicable to open cut installation pipelines. The trenchless design is dangerous. Freco does turn off these canals once in a while to conduct maintenance of the canal itself. We have advised Metro that we are happy to coordinate the timing of that with their open cut so that they can put their pipeline in. Metro apparently doesn't want to time its construction that way and wants the flexibility to be able to bore under that ditch anytime that they want. We think the convenience of Metro against the risks of losing billions and billions of gallons of water is is not a good balance and does not meet your standards for conditional use permit approval. The next one is the permit holder shall coordinate with Freco and Burlington regarding the timing of open cut installation so that the installation occurs during times when the ditch is turned off for planned maintenance. We think that's eminent eminently reasonable for a ditch of this magnitude. And in fact, if you had construction in your roads, you'd make sure that they were timed in an appropriate way to minimize the disruption. We ask for the same. And then the requirements of conditions S, T, and U above, which are the three that we just mentioned, are regulatory requirements that shall not be waived in the event that the permit holder requires crossing rights by eminent domain. We know that it is likely that if Metro gets its rights through eminent domain, they will argue that they've met condition E, which is they have the rights that they need. But that doesn't protect the public safety. It doesn't satisfy your conditional use permit standards. And so it's Commerce City has the ability to say, even if you have those rights, you're subject to our regulations. And so we request that Commerce City add these four conditions of approval, which we believe are eminently reasonable, and we are prepared to work with Metro Wastewater to get this done on short order. But the these are critically important in terms of public safety, in terms of the protection of this vital water supply and in terms of, you know, making sure that these agencies that are in charge of very important infrastructure are are in fact working together. And just one last thing in terms of history, we put on the end of February, February twentieth, we offered up language for crossing agreements that was eminently reasonable to Metro's counsel, who is not present tonight. And we did not hear back until we got a demand letter in eminent domain and then a couple of days later a suit in eminent domain. So we have tried to negotiate. We will continue to try. And we will be opposing these eminent domain lawsuits with everything that we have in order to protect the integrity of these ditches. We ask for your help in that regard. It will not stop the project. We don't want to stop the project. We agree that these crossings have to happen. They just have to happen safely. With that, I respectfully request that the body add S, T, U, and V from our August fourth letter to its recommendation to the city council, and I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Messenger. For staff, Ms. Axemar is, I understand that these have been submitted and included in the record for today?
That is correct.
Any questions for Mr. Messenger? Thank you for your.
I'm I'm curious, Mr. Messenger, were these brought up in the past, you know, month or two when the Planning Department was really going through the individual pieces and if not, why not? And if so, what was their reasoning that they weren't included in our presentation?
Well, I don't want to speak for Ms. Axemar. What I can say is that the applicant recommended and had an agreement with the city of Commerce City that they would coordinate, and this is their words, coordinate with Freco in a parallel process to this approval process. And so if the city had some level of comfort, it would have been because of that representation that the applicant would work it out with Freco. And in it's only been since August fifteenth or August fourteenth, I'm sorry, that Metro decided to file a suit in eminent domain after we had requested that they respond to the documents that we had provided to them. You know, we would be happy to provide the city with those documents.